Call this meeting to order. The City Commission, Rio Grande City. Wednesday, November 15th, approximately 6:05, 6:06 PM. Here in Commission Chambers. City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83. Sweet A here in Rio Grande City, Texas. This time we'll go ahead and have the invocation by Commissioner Ramirez, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Garza.
Let's start our heads. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here today. Please allow us to clear our minds so we may conduct the city business and make decisions that need to be made for the city. And in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Honor, justice, rights.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state and the God.
Excuse the faux pas. Obviously, we switched our flags.
Little switcheroo?
So apologies for the switcheroo there. This time we'll have the road call and finding of forum.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Villarreal.
Present.
Mayor Protem Garza. Commissioners Arlina. Commissioners Arlina's absent. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Jones absent. You have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have later Item 1C, Public Forum. We call Mr. Daniel Villarreal, Rio Bike Fest.
Mr. Villarreal, welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, the Rio Local Bike Fest. On October, the 21st, 2017, we had 12 participants in our Rio Bike Fest. We did not know we're gonna have 100. We did not know we're gonna have 2. We had 12. But it does so be it. The show must go on. And I'd like to thank the sponsors and people who helped out, contributions by Judy Solis, Attorney at Law. Balan Arigazza, Attorney at Law. Benedalo Arigazza, Attorney at Law. And I'd like to spend some volunteer time and some special thanks to Felix Garcia, Roel Reyes, Mrs. Hernandez, Mrs. Peña, and Mr. Perez. Thank you very much. I also like to thank, and we also had a show and shine that was won by John Pope. John Pope was also one of the sponsors of this event. And so John Pope, Attorney at Law. Ana Lisa Garza, Attorney at Law.
What type of bike did he have, Mr. Villarreal?
He had a Softail. He had a Softail, beautiful. And it was judged by Felix Garcia. And thus, thus he won the best show and shine.
All right.
But we also had Ana Lisa Garza sponsoring it, as well as Basilio Villarreal, Grandi Beauty, and Ophelia Villarreal Garcia, Garden Club. But the pride and joy of our event was the fact that we had a $1,000 poker run. It was won by Joe Flores with a flush. One car short of a roll flush, but he didn't ever let us pull out a flush. And that was thank you for the sponsors of what would be Limeburger and Associates, Attorney at Law, Action Belt Company. And a special thanks to the Rio PD, Escoladis PD, Roma PD, and Sheriff Fuentes in our Sheriff Department, who escorted us from one end of Starr County to the other end and brought us back safely. Thank you very much. And thus, we raised just over $800. Thank you.
Well, thank you to you, Mr. Villarreal. I know that you certainly participated in them, took the lead on this first annual Rio Local Bike Poker Run and Fest. And we certainly look forward to the future of making this bigger and better next year.
And next year will be bigger. Next year, we plan more sponsors, more money we're gonna get out. And thank you, Mr. Villarreal, for naming this baby. Thank you. Rio Local Bike Fest.
And the contribution, of course, to the Boys and Girls Club. They donated monies. And at this time, Mr. Villarreal, can you? Hold on, Mr. Villarreal.
Yes, sir. As you mentioned, Mayor and the Commissioners, if we did, yeah, the Bike Fest did raise, I think it was $822.
Just over $822.
Just over $822 donated to the Boys and Girls Club. It was a great event. There was a lot of motorcycles there during the Fahita Kokov. It was during the Fahita Kokov, just to be a reminder. We would like to recognize Mr. Daniel Villarreal with a plaque for his contribution to the Rio Grande City Boys and Girls Youth Club.
Fantastic.
Very good.
I wanna go take a picture.
Yes. We can go ahead and come forward and please.
If I forgot anybody, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all of you.
Thank you all.
Flags are... All right, so we're gonna...
Okay, ready? I'm gonna give it a go here. One, two, three.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And again, we can't say enough about individuals who, of course, take the lead and contribute back to the community in some way, shape, or form. And certainly, Mr. Villarreal and his group did a tremendous job in raising some funds and giving back to the community in some way, shape, or form. And certainly, look forward to continued working with other community members, taking the lead with these type of volunteer services. So again, Mr. Villarreal, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I know. I have a couple people. Roel Reyes, Photography. Gata's Restaurant. Thank you very much. Chili's Restaurant. Thank you very much. Canalis Driving. Thank you very much. And Garza Painted Body. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure we didn't forget anyone, Mr. Villarreal. All right? Thank you again. This time, we'll have, under Public Forum, we have Item C. Letter B, Joe Ramirez Jr., RGCC ISD Cross Country.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, once again, today we'd like to recognize the Rio Grande City High School Cross Country Team. They, uh... This is the first time in school history that this team has earned the regional championship title. They recently earned it in October 22nd. I would like to call upon the Cross Country Coach, Coach Andrew Lopez. Mr. Ramirez is not here right now. He's in Austin, coming back. Actually, we had one of the, one of the track, Cross Country kids actually signed with UT. So we have his assistant coach, Andrew Lopez. If you'd like to come up here and say a few words, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioners. Good evening.
I'd like to start out by introducing some of these boys. Unfortunately, we couldn't have everybody here today. Of course, our number one boy, he's signing with UT today. So he's on his way back from a campus visit. Some of the other boys, they were at the National Honor Society ceremony that they had tonight, and another one was playing at a basketball game. Some of the individuals that we do have here today, we have JD Corona. He's a senior. Come on up, JD. Alex Canalis. He's a freshman. And Guillermo Villarreal, who is a sophomore. These three boys who are part of our Garcia team. Some of the team accomplishments this year. We were meet of champions, champions, okay? Which is a meet that consists of pretty much all the teams in the valley. So we won that one, giving us the title of the best team in the valley. We won our district meet by three points against Shiloh Pioneer. After that, about two weeks later, we went on to win the regional meet. We competed in the state meet about two weeks ago. And we came home with a fifth place finish out of about 250 teams in the state. So these boys worked very hard throughout the whole summer, throughout the, throughout the whole fall, throughout the whole season. I'd like to thank you guys for having us here today and recognizing these boys for their accomplishments.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Before we hand out certificates, let me just, you know, thank you all for being here today. Coaches have been here. I think Coach Altavés is also here. Coach, come up. You're part of the staff. Thank the parents for all the support. I know I was lucky enough to be at the state meet a couple weeks ago to witness, I guess, kind of history in the making. Like Coach mentioned, you know, it's been, I think, 35 years since the last district championship was brought to Rio Grande City. And, you know, it's been a long time. Hopefully, we don't have to wait another 35 years to bring back another trophy. But, you know, a couple years ago, when I met Coach Ramirez, about eight years ago, I met him at the state track meet that night. I didn't know who he was. He's married to one of our local residents here. And, you know, introduced himself to me and kind of, you know, chit chat back and forth. And asked, you know, for an opportunity to coach in Rio. I said, "Well, there's nothing available now, but, you know, in the near future, just keep in touch and, you know, hopefully, we can get something going." A year later, he showed up and, you know, he was working in the valley. And again, asked for an opportunity. I said, "You know, there's nothing available." But in talking to him, I could, you know, really sense the passion, you know, really understands what cross country is all about. He was an athlete himself. And I believe also he ran in college, just like Coach Lopez did and Khatahib did. And to me, that's a big, you know, important thing. Because I can, I think they understand what it takes really to go to the next level and to really to establish a foundation to really give our kids an opportunity to really succeed. He promised me when I hired him that he was gonna bring a championship back to Rio in three years. Well, it took him five years, but, you know, forgive him for that. Not only did he win a district championship, or the boys won the title, but also regional championship, which had not been done in history of Rio Grande City. Back in '86, a track team won the championship, but that was in track and field. And again, you guys are part of a special group of teams that really accomplished that here in the valley. And coaches can attest to that. And it doesn't happen nothing. But when it does, you share it, you know? Again, you know, live it, you know? Share the memories, you know, with your teammates and all the hard work y'all put into it. Again, congratulations on a great year. And again, hope we can repeat it again next year. So again, congratulations, guys. Okay? Thank you.
And again, to reiterate what Commissioner Ramirez alluded to is it's great to have our community and individuals that, especially in athletics, are able to excel at the regional and state level. And it's something to be proud of. Certainly, a lot of work that goes, a lot of dedication, time, effort by many individuals. And of course, the coaches, the staff, the parents, of course, allowing that time as well. So we cannot say enough about individuals that excel in the community and how the pride comes back to the community where these athletes excel. And certainly, Rio Grande City is proud to have, again, athletes that are able to excel at the state level, at, again, regional level, and moving on and beyond. Especially individuals too that have participated at some point in some of our league, our youth leagues, or our summer leagues here in the city. And we can't say enough. So again, congratulations. Great work. Great job. And to the parents. Awesome. Congratulations. You have the parents up here too, please. Parents, I remember the Olímpicos. Yes, please. Let's celebrate this moment.
Felicidades.
Yes.
Guillermo Villarreal.
Get the four. Tires. Get the front boys.
Okay, ready? One, two, three? One, two, three?
Thank you so much.
At this time, since we have the floor in this, are there any parents that would like to say a few words, please? You're more than welcome to come up. Anyone?
Let me just add, before I forget. Again, I know I recognized Coach Altavés and Coach Lopez. But again, you know, in talking to, you know, the coaches, you know, you know, when we brought in Coach Ramirez, I know that was part of the plan to, you know, put a staff together that really cared about cross country. Cross country, as you know, is not your most glamorous sport, you know, but I think it's a tough sport, you know? Now, that's why you have very few athletes that really can participate and really dedicate their time to really, you know, put in the 50, 60 miles a week. And it's tough. Not anybody can do it. Or, you know, it takes a special type of athlete to really to balance their academics and athletics. And waking up at 5:00 in the morning to really show up at 6:00 and practice, and it's tough. You know, so I commend you guys for really putting in the work. And like, as I mentioned, you know, and really putting the staff together, you know? We had Coach Altavés here that had been here for a long time. We brought in Coach Ramirez. And of course, Coach Lopez, who ran for Nicky Row, but, you know, his family's from here, from Rio Grande. You know, both his parents are from here. And I know he's a rattler at heart. That's right. Yes, exactly. And of course, he ran at UT, RGV, had a real successful career there as well. And so those type of coaches really understand what it really takes, you know, to take our kids to the next level. So I'm putting that stuff together really. I'm really pleased and congratulations. I'm really doing what you've done, coaches. You know, outstanding job. So thank you. Okay?
This time, we move on to Item 1D, Departmental Reports. We've got a few. Chief Castillo? It's gonna be hard to top that, chief. I know.
Great job. Mayor, Commissioners, how are you all doing this evening? We, on the 21st, we're gonna get together at the Jerrina, encompassing the back of the Police Department. And we're gonna give our annual turkeys to 20 needing families that are pre-selected.
Okay.
HEB has always helped us out. And, you know, we, we got donations from the police officers and everybody, the staff at the PD. And we got together for 20 turkeys outside of what HEB gives us. And, you know, we'll be there 10 o'clock in the morning. Y'all are welcome to join us, Mr. Perez. And anyone else...
What day was this again?
It's on the 21st.
21st.
Yes, 10 o'clock in the morning. Also, what we got planned for the beginning of December is our second annual softball tournament toy drive. And, you know, that's some of the stuff that we get for our toy drive. And, you know, before the holidays, we start giving toys around the town to everybody that, till they, we exhausted. So, you know, that's on the Saturday, December 9th. And anybody wanting information, they could contact Ana Ramirez at the Police Department. And she'll give us, you can give them the more information on that. I think it's a $10 toy per player. And last year, we did get a bunch of toys for the kids. So, you know, it's a good cost. So if anybody wants to go out there, they're very welcome to go join us. That's all I get for now.
This year, are we coordinating the toy driving? Well, or giveaway as far as with the Fire Department as well? Or what's the...
I think the Fire Department does their own... I think they did some of that themselves last year. But I'll talk to the chief and...
Well, to see if we can coordinate the same day. In other words, when we're gonna give them out. I know we've had separate days, but maybe this year, we can put it together.
I'll see what they got planned. And then we'll see what we could do together.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Appreciate it. Mr. Guerra?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Good evening.
Mr. Guerra?
How are you, sir?
Good.
You're great. I was gonna add a little bit to my report. All the Christmas decorations are being put up already. And our Britain Avenue is decorated. But it's only ready to be plugged in so they can go.
Are all of them operational, sir?
Yes, sir.
Because I know, I saw a few that were not. If you can just double check that all of them are lit up and...
Okay. I'll be checking to that, sir. Probably the GFI or something's not working properly. But, and I want that with you. Everybody, happy Thanksgiving Day, sir.
Thank you, sir. And hopefully, this year, and get the community involved, especially along the Main Street, or actually anywhere, to see if we can have individuals to participate in lighting up Rio Grande City. And have all these businesses and others, individuals, see how many people can contribute to that. And I certainly would like to see Rio Grande City...
More light up.
Well, come into that spirit of Christmas and giving and decorating. It'd be awesome, especially along the Route 83, on Highway 83 and so on. So...
Main Street, sir.
Main Street. And see how many people, how many individuals that we can encourage and influence to participate in this endeavor. Be great.
I'll start working to that. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Guia?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Gosh, my summary is a little longer than the ones that went before me. But it's been some time since we've given you an update. And so I'll begin with the final negotiations on a much anticipated retail project are in the works to bring 500 new jobs to our city, an estimated 500 new jobs to our city. We've been working very closely with the Starr County Industrial Foundation on this. And we expect announcements on the project to come very, very soon. We're also working with the Healthcare Prospect on their expansion project in Rio Grande City. A while back, I told you a little bit about this. They're undergoing their due diligence and securing a title commitment on the proposed site. This project is expected to create up to 200 jobs in the nursing and allied health sector. We also have facilitated a site visit and meeting for a group of investors seeking to initiate a diesel fuel terminal project in Rio Grande City with a goal of export into Mexico. And I know Rose was also instrumental in helping me secure that meeting for the group. We're in the early stages of site selection and landowner research to develop a couple of tracks for a solar energy project. We're working with the group to establish a date for their site visit. And we continue to work with private stakeholders and state agencies on the commercial transportation project over at our port of entry. A lunch social to meet Tech Dot's new district engineer has been coordinated by the Starr County Industrial Foundation. You should have received an email invitation. If not, let us know before you go this evening. I'm also pleased to report that Gran Cielo Residences, an affordable home development over on Eisenhower, is doing very well with their leases. Of course, they provide one, two, and three bedroom accommodations. The developer expresses his thanks to the city and everyone involved, all departments involved, for their support in this project. Our new affordable home partner, Affordable Homes of South Texas, held their first pre-qualification event here at City Hall on November 4th. Their setup was impressive. They've reported that about 20 or so potential homeowners went through the initial steps and took home a pre-qualification letter. They hope to get all the final details on that out to us because I know the city's also wanting to get a report on that. They expect to have a model home up as soon as their bids are approved. And they've already gone through bid opening and all of that. And most recently, we attended a Ruta 54 meeting in Miguel Aleman with members of the Rio Grande City delegation. Some of us participated in the Tourism Roundtable. Sarah with Tourism, along with a couple of other members. And I participated in the Economic Development Roundtable. The group identified some goals for the project that include a strong web presence outlining all of the qualities of each cities in the area. A single inspection protocol in Miguel Aleman and in Roma, very similar to what we have now in Rio Grande City. And a retail development in Los Herreras to Serrado. And then finally, recruiting Chinese investment to the area. So this next meeting of Ruta 54 is expected in the early 2018, probably January or so, in Agualeguas. Sorry, I didn't say that correctly. But the next one after that will be held here in Rio Grande City about May or June. So we can anticipate planning for that. And speaking of the cargo inspection at the port, we attended the unified cargo pilot program announcement at the Rio Grande City Port of Entry. For those of you unfamiliar, the joint cargo inspection helps to eliminate separate inspections and reduces times for cargo crossings, making Rio Grande City an attractive port for investors and commerce. And some of our most recent grand openings include Citizen State Bank over on the west end of the city that was held on October 19th. Rio Mac Fitness had their official grand opening, but they've been around for two years now. And this was, this is actually right behind City Hall. And as you know, Medina Electric continues to build. And their site's going up very nicely. Border Town, Border Ace Hardware's also getting going on their project. And we've been visiting with Mr. Peña on that. And then, of course, the Dollar General over on the east end is coming along very nicely. And very recently, we met with our partners at SBDC, the Starr County Industrial Foundation, the Rio Grande City Public Library to set the new seminar schedule. We're covering, over the course of eight seminars, the following topics: franchising, legal tips, payroll, social media, tax tips, business planning, and energy efficiency. We've been able to attract more people to these events, more partnerships and sponsors. So we're looking forward to another good year of seminars. And as for downtown and Main Street, some of y'all drive past the Main Street office. And if you look over to the north, next to the gas station office or gas office, you will see the building was painted. The what was once blue now has like a pretty brick color. And that's thanks to the hard work of the Main Street Advisory Board. They were out there with rollers and paint and did a really nice job with that. We're working very closely with them on the lighting of the Christmas tree that is coming up December 6th and the Christmas parade on December 8th. And I have to thank Fernando and his crew for helping us install the ornament lights. And to answer your question, Mayor, about some of those lights, we are having some issues with the photocells, but we're getting those addressed. So it should be taken care of. But I've never counted the number of bulbs that we put in our downtown area, but I'm sure there are plenty and more of them still yet to come, so we hope to meet your goal of lighting up downtown as you described. This year's Main Street, the lighting of the Christmas tree, will have the traditional hot chocolate and cookies, but it's also gonna have a kiddie train, vendors giving away free toys to the children, carolers, a jazz band, coloring contest with the library, and of course, a special visit from Santa Claus. And the parade on the eighth has a movie theme, and Sarah's picking up applications at her office as the EDC and City Hall. I think we're recommending that they bring them over to the parade site, is that right? Anyhow, if you need an application, just let us know. In October, we hosted a large group of visitors, the Tropical Trails Group, they held a breakfast, or we held a breakfast for them at the Tejera Courtyard. They were very, very happy about our support and hospitality during their visit. They got a chance to go out and see La Mulada Ranch just north of the city. And the EDC's been out scheduling with park directors for our upcoming winter Texans season. We anticipate this is gonna be another great year of visitors and expect to see the trolley out and about more often. And there's so much more I could say, but I'm gonna ask you, if you have not signed up for our newsletter, please do so. You'll get dates, information, details on everything happening in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guillen. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. As Mrs. Guillen mentioned, we are obviously in preparations for the upcoming Christmas holiday. We feel very bad for Thanksgiving, nobody, you know, was giving it much attention. We're already on to Christmas, so that week, I believe December first kicks off the holiday season. Dr. B will be having her Winter Wonderland December first and second. The Christmas tree lighting will be December sixth. The Feast of Sharing will be December seventh, and the Christmas parade will be December eighth. Also, the Crime Stoppers is hosting a fundraiser for the Blue Santa Toy Drive on December ninth. So we'll be very busy at the beginning of December, and hopefully the week of Christmas, they can go out with the fire department, the police department to give out those toys. That's pretty much what we've been working on. I've been passing out a lot of applications for the parade, there's a lot of interest. We wanna make it as big and beautiful as it has been every year, and people are really liking the theme and calling, what if I do this movie, what if I do that movie, will I win? And I'm like, well, I'm not the judge, but yes, try it.
Didn't the city win first place last year?
We won first place.
So we expect bigger and better this year.
And we will, you know, we will have a float this year as well, Mayor, but of course, we will not compete since the city did take over the Christmas parade, it would not be fair. We will open up the parade with our parade marshals, grand marshals this year, as y'all may know, is the Rio Grande City veterans. They will open up the parade with the trolley. Mrs. Guillen is gonna lend us a trolley to have all the veterans in there, and the ones that can walk will walk beside it, and then the city float will be the first float. And we already have a theme going, a movie that we're gonna do, so that'll kick off the parade, and hopefully everything runs smoothly, because it'll be our first. But Public Works is there every year, so I don't foresee that we should have any issues.
And that certainly is a great touch, as far as having the veterans serving as parade marshals. That's fantastic, it was an excellent touch.
And as you know, the mayor was present for the veterans' dinner, and they came out, and we had a lot of veterans this year, which is great. It's great that the word is being spread that we have this appreciation dinner every year, so we wanna get as much veterans as possible at this dinner to enjoy themselves.
Sarah, is Dr. Stanley hosting the Thanksgiving place that he is?
The last I got word is that they would not be hosting it this year.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Appreciate it. Anyone else?
Anyone else? Ms. Sainz?
If I, if I may, Mayor, before Ms. Sainz goes on board, I'm following up what Dalinda said of the Affordable Homes event that we had. It was very well organized, but not only were they offering the affordable homes, even there were programs to, for financial consulting and literacy. We have groups of people that are eligible for, but for one or two issues, they were not able to continue, but they were referred, and yesterday they met with, I think, four persons as they continued to help them. So don't get discouraged, please apply, they're still taking applications. You can contact City Hall, or you can contact the phone number directly. Even if you say, well, I don't, I earn more, they also have programs for the for-profit, which is the spec home that they were, they're going to be building. I think four persons went through that also. So the intent is to continue getting applications, they are also already looking at other property to continue the next round. And we're already working with Hollis to do a down payment assistance grant to make it even more affordable, so we're moving forward on that. And on the Main Street program, we got notified, it's a small grant, because it's a foundation grant, a thousand six hundred for the benches to replace them on Britton Avenue, so we got that funded, and moving forward that. And also, as Sarah was saying about the veterans, we opened the museum on Saturday for, after the activities, the veterans went by, and a lot of families that came to visit their veteran relatives got to see the display, they were moved and touched. So the museum is open from nine to twelve and one to five every day. Encourage everyone to go and see so much patriotic, patriotic that the city has, like from veterans and pictures of soldiers from the Confederate all the way to Desert Storm in the Iraqi.
And to continue on that note, is just to continue highlighting the many endeavors and projects that are occurring in Rio Grande City that are certainly bringing attention to our community, reiterating the affordable housing, I mean, that's a tremendous project, and certainly is gonna benefit the community tremendously for years to come. Certainly, the unified cargo processing occurring at our port of entry, and this is the only port of entry in the entire valley that has this. We're second to Laredo in the state, but first in our, in the valley, in our region, or actually in the valley to have this unified cargo processing, that Ruta cincuenta y cuatro and everything that's going on there as well, the museum, and so many other projects that are occurring in the city. And sometimes, we don't highlight some of these projects, but there are a lot of wonderful things that are happening here in Rio Grande City that are gonna again contribute to the welfare and the quality of life of our, of our community and our citizens, so, and residents, of course, so again, can't say that enough. And great and kudos to all the staff that obviously are the ones who make this possible, again, can't say enough about that, so congratulations, and let's continue the great work. And of course, I know that our, our Main Street eventually will be recognized nationally. I know we've said that before, and I believe that it will in the near future, so can't wait for that to happen as well, so. With that, go ahead, Mr. Sainz.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I just wanna inform you all that the water department was able to stabilize the pressure to the northwest side of town, which includes the Gran Cielo Apartments. We, we had a little struggle there, we had to do several emergency projects to be able to stabilize the water pressure to that area, which you all might know, we extended, we installed a twelve-inch water line on our west side of town, on the water plant itself, it was three thousand nine hundred and eighty feet of twelve-inch water line. And then at the same time, doing that, we had to replace our Kane Street, which was eight hundred and sixty feet of eight-inch water line, that it was, previously, it was a six-inch cast iron water line. So we replaced it to an eight-inch, so that, because it was an older line, it was busting when we were boosting up our pumps at the water plant, it was breaking, so we had to do that as an emergency project as well. And that, you know, coordinating all that with Julio, Rio Delta, he's, has been of a great help throughout all this process. And then at the same time, coordinating with our SCADA system, we found that it was not set up the way it was supposed to, it was supposed to be set up at our highest point, which was our Eisenhower elevated tank, but it was set up to the Idalgo, so that, you know, stalled the process itself, and once we were there, we came across the valve at the Idalgo, water tower was not working properly, so we had to replace that as well. So you know, we encountered issues here and there, and, but at the end, we were able to maintain, and we, it's been stabilized, and gladly that the Gran Cielo Apartments are up and running already. We have, you know, fifty-plus PSI's, and still working to boosting it up a little bit more, just, you know, keeping it level at the same time, because we don't wanna have breakage, because at the same time, our water loss, it's slowly coming up, but we still haven't surpassed that twenty-five percent because of our main water breaks, you know, on Kane Street and, you know, the oldest parts of towns, but we're working on it, we're working with Rio Delta, identifying Enrique, our foreman, the old water line, so we can, you know, slowly continue to replace them and avoid all this water breakage and water loss. And all this, again, like Mayor said, we cannot do it with each and every one of my employees from the water plants, you all don't get to see them, but they're always, you know, twenty-four seven, trying to maintain our water plants, working and, you're moving along slowly but surely, you know, and fixing everything that we can.
And that's certainly one of the departments that sometimes, again, does not go recognize, because a lot of this infrastructure, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, it's underground, so you cannot really see.
Yes.
How much is being invested, or how much is being utilized, or for that matter, addressed some of these issues, so cannot say that enough. Our water department, certainly there are a lot of needs, and the reality is that the city cannot grow without proper pressure and water to all the, and meeting the needs of the residents and the commercial properties as well, so again, can't say that enough about continued involvement in that department and the unsung heroes, as they say, because, again, there's so many needs there, and we're gonna continue to address, obviously, all these needs.
Oh, yes.
And, but again, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that are being invested, and for the community to know that those monies are being well spent.
Exactly, and then at the same time, you know, we are, again, working with Rio Delta, great help, again, I have to, you know, give them the credit, you know, identifying and prioritizing, because again, like Mayor said, you know, there's a lot of things that we need to, you know, upgrade and change and improve, so a lot of money, and like, I always thank my employees, you know, without you, because the water department does not run with each and every one of you, we need all of you all in order to operate our department.
And just to be clear, it might be a hundred, hundreds of thousands in the last few months, but when you look at it, it's millions of dollars being invested in, in the infrastructure, so again, you're looking at millions of dollars, so thank you, Ms. Sainz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
If you can, please let me know when, when that line that was installed on Church Lane?
Oh, yes.
Is ready to go, because I know of some applicants that are already, they're ready to.
They've been coming to the office, and actually today, I spoke to you last week, Mr. Garcia, today, we lowered down the tank at Las Lomas area to see, you know, as we were talking about the chlorination system, and tomorrow, we're gonna test it, and then hopefully it'll be good to go, so we can test and open the line.
Yeah, I know, some of those people are anxious already.
Yes, and I told them, like, it was a project that had been held for a few years, you know, have, you know, gladly, we were able to install, it was about seven thousand two hundred feet of four-inch water line that was installed to that area. So now, you know, since it's a little bit further over there, you know, our chlorine was not, it's not getting to the endous point of that area, so we're lowering our water tank at Las Lomas to be able to, I guess, mix the water and chemicals to be able to go all the way to the foreign side of.
How many homes are gonna be serviced in that area?
I'm sorry?
How many homes are gonna be serviced in Church?
We're looking about twenty to twenty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, and they had been, I guess, living with Ms. Bass and Mr. Klein, you know.
For a while?
It had been a long while.
About fifteen years? About fifteen years? Or at least, that's what someone told me.
Yeah, a long, a long time, they, I know they did a petition, and then they came with Ms. Bass and Mr. Klein, you know, and you know, along, eventually, you know, we were able.
And eventually, you, you know, once that gets going, you'll see more.
Oh, yes.
More development out there.
Yes.
You probably need a tank or a booster, because we have a certified realignment that when it opens, it will generate a lot of commercial in that area.
Yeah, and at the same time, you know, talking about the tanks itself, I sure will, we're looking at fundings at the same time for the Garcia's Water Tower, because that was, I guess, one of our main downward, I guess I can say, for our water pressure. So we're looking to, I guess, we're just finalizing the audit, and then so we can able to do the applications, Julio has been looking into it, so we're just waiting, you know, again, for the audit itself, so we are able to make the applications and get some fundings for all that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Norma?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I just, real quick, wanna tell you, I know you hear a lot of us talking about the same things, but we usually partner up together, and the library helped with the Veterans Appreciation Dinner, along with the Tourism Department. Sarah was able to secure the funds needed for the dinner and the drinks, and the library was able to get some goodie bags and just get a lot of different little prizes for.
Very nice prices, by the way, Ms. Holt.
And then we also, the Friends of the Library also gave out some gift cards, and so that was real nice. And then we, you know, typically, since they serve us and have made our country free, we actually served them that evening, so the library, for one night, we become the servers of the dinner. Just, we also have coming up our Storybook Christmas, that'll be December the twelfth, and because we've kind of outgrown our library, we'll be hosting it at the Lopez Tejera Courtyard, unless the weather, you know, is, is not cooperating, then we'll come back to the library. And before this, we'll have a holiday fun coloring contest, we have the prizes by the Friends of the Library, they usually give us bicycles and skateboards and things of that nature, and we co-partner with the town prior. And just one more final thing, and I do have posters, if y'all like to see, today we will be starting with the Universal Class, it'll be available online, it has over five hundred different courses that you can take. These are accredited, from an accredited provider, everywhere, from health to business to how to create Christmas wreaths, and you can take, you go and you learn at your own pace, and at the end of the course, if you choose to, you can take a test for, to get CEU hours, and then if you want a really fancy and possible certificate, you can also order that, that's for a fee. Everything else is for free, so I really encourage you to come and look at, this is a really great new thing that we've just added, and we do have the links already at the library, I mean, on our website, at the rgclibrary.com and rgclibrary.org, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Last, last month, we had some, we had some fires, and I wanna congratulate the fire department for doing an outstanding job. I got to see one very close to my house. I know that there were some other agencies involved, and I didn't see all the, all the agencies that were there to assist, but I, I did see for, I did see Roma and La Rosita, but I like for the Assistant Fire Chief, that we let these people know that, that we appreciate them coming out and giving us a hand, and I'm glad nobody got hurt, and all the residents, neighbors, and even though they, they were, they took quite a scare because I was one of them, but, but again, before I turn it over to Mr. Muniz, I'd like to tell him that it's, I'm happy to see him again, up and running, and I saw him at one of the, one of the fire sites, and I'm glad to see him in good health again and back at work.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and Councilmen. Well, I'm glad to be back, first of all, feel better, a little hoarse still, but feel better. And in touch with a little bit of what Mr. Garcia was talking about, we do like to give thanks to local volunteer fire departments who helped us out, it was really needed, appreciated and needed. We have Roma and Salineño Fire Department as well, came down, La Rosita, La Casita Fire Department as well, we'd just like to give them thanks for them, in helping us out with these fires, local fires.
We really appreciate it, so we make sure we let them know.
We'll send them a thank you note from the city.
Okay.
Again, thank you to La Rosita, Roma, Salineño.
And La Casita.
And La Casita Fire Departments for coming to the, our aid in time of need, can't say that enough, thank you to all these fire departments, and of course, we are there to return the favor, should they ever need our, our services as well. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Moving on to item number two, Consent Agenda, we have considered approval of departmental travel request, and letter B, consider approval of minutes from previous meetings. Anything there?
We got some training, Ms. Benya and myself will be going to the election seminar in Austin. That's coming up at, towards the end of November, and the Planning Department's got some, I guess, ongoing education that they're attending.
They actually got their license too, two of them were able to get their state license.
They're providing education units for bone enforcement, animal control, and vector control.
All from the same location, right?
Yes, all in same location.
Same time.
And that supplies us all with ready for the whole year.
If any time, if it's possible, at least by early next year, if we can have a copy of the, of the election schedule, as far as the procedure, get it, get it to.
And this election seminar, it covers all the do's and don'ts?
Yes.
And I'm assuming protection against any type of, I guess, funny business, any type of. You mean like mail-in ballots, that sort of thing, making sure that there's no fraud in our election process?
Yes.
All the new laws that just got passed.
The new laws that just got passed? Okay. Perfect.
It covers a lot. Holly and I went last time, and it covers a lot, so this big man.
All right, so we have a motion.
I saw Mayor approve all items A and B.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent agenda, items A and B, we have a second by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, Business and Orders, item three, Resolutions, letter A, considering possible action on resolution number twenty seventeen dash twenty-five concerning the negotiation, transfer, and conveyance of approximately twelve point five acres and all improvements located at. of approximately twelve point five acres and all improvements located at AB ninety-two Portion Seventy-eight Telagara track thirty, twelve point four nine nine acres, North FM six forty-nine, Roma Star County, Texas, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a real estate sales contract as attached thereto made a part thereof as exhibit A.
So this is a property that the police department had, uh, acquired through a seizure. It went through the courts and probably, uh, Mr. Kalik still could probably elaborate a little bit more, um, on how we wanna convey the property.
We, we suggest that you do it through a, through a special warranty, not a general warranty deed. Because there was a default judgment on this property. That's how this, the, the city got it. Uh, if you wanna convey a general warranty deed, it's gonna, it's gonna cost a little bit to get it, uh, the liens cleared and make sure we, you, you get pulled and clear title to it. It was just in two thousand thirteen when, when the city got it through a default judgment. I understand there might be a broker and the state does allow that. Uh, he probably would wanna do it through a general warranty deed. But our recommendation would be just give, give a special warranty.
Okay.
We did attach a memo explaining why.
Right. So we have a, a motion.
Yeah, I move that, uh, we approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash twenty-five.
Okay. We have a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-five, second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next, items three B, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash twenty-six, designating official city holidays for calendar year twenty eighteen. And it's three B.
Ms. Pena worked on putting the calendar together. You wanna talk about it, Ms. Pena? I think the Commissioner also had some comments.
All right.
So I think that the city should have the same holidays that the county.
I agree. I agree.
I'm glad you've come to agree to what the proposal is. Is there a motion, sir?
Well, let's hear it first from our city secretary.
We added three days to the holiday calendar, which is Martin Luther King Day. Then we have Easter Monday and Veterans Day. Those are the only three days that we added to the calendar. It's the same holidays as the county.
Which was the third one?
Veterans.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
It's Martin Luther, Easter and Veterans Day.
Well deserved. With that, being said, I.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Garza.
It's gonna be motioned.
To approve resolution number twenty seventeen dash twenty, is that a six, twenty-six? Second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
Do we still keep a skeleton group just in case something comes up or?
It goes down. City help.
Emergency numbers.
We do.
For utility.
Utilities of utility.
Public works and.
Very good.
Is it non-call, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So three new calendars for employees well deserved.
Thank you.
Again, uh, kudos to individuals involved in, uh, moving on with this calendar. But again, uh, certainly well deserved. So awesome. Congratulations. Next, uh, business and orders, item four, ordinances, letter A, first reading and approval of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash eight, imposing a variance request application fee.
Mr. Milan, you wanna elaborate on that?
Yes, uh, for many years, we have, uh, processed variance requests. Obviously, the whole intent of the fee is to discourage, uh, constituents, developers, you know, contractors to ask for variances. It not only creates a burden to, uh, employees, you know, we have to do research and at the end, uh, financial institutions look at these variances and, and we have to create letters, we get into legal matters and it's, uh, the whole point is to discourage the request of variances. That's what it's all about. Mr. Vierel?
Well, but I'm assuming that at the same time, these variances, of course, it takes time, effort, manpower to address some of these. And it's something that, uh, obviously other municipalities have done. Uh, we in Rio Grande City have not. Uh, however, it is time that, uh, that we look and certainly considering the commission, uh, question is gonna be how much money for the variance? And particularly if it's costing us money to have to do the research and again, the time and effort that's involved in having to go through the process of these variances.
And it also costs, uh, like I said, the citizens, you know, it costs money because at the end, some financial institutions do not finance if it doesn't meet the existing building codes or city requirements or even developers' requirements.
And what's the fee that you're proposing, Mr. Milan?
So we have, I believe it's three hundred dollars.
Yes, we submitted again a memo regarding this issue. Uh, you can, as the mayor said, uh, recover for any direct cost that the city has. We, in our memo, we included, as you can see, different cities throughout, uh, the valley. Uh, but again, that would be, uh, your decision as to what, what the fee would be. The lowest one being one seventy, the highest one being seven fifty of the cities that we surveyed, uh, for this, uh, uh, variance. And again, uh, I don't think three hundred dollars, what we suggested is not out of.
Out of this whole.
Uh, uh, out of range for, for what you can do.
Is that for a single variance, even if, uh, for a home that wants to build a carport and request a five-foot variance? That would also apply to that individual as well?
Yes, uh, the whole point is again, to create, uh, harmony in, uh, subdivisions. Some of these, uh, developers have also expressed their concern about, you know, Asian variances. And at the end, lowering the values on their homes or properties or developments, however you wanna call it. That's what it's all about.
In my experience, I have a home in Rio Grande, by the way, now. But my home in Macala, and I asked for a variance and up, upfront, that's what you're asked for if you have to go through the variance process. And there's no guarantee you're gonna get what you're asking for, but it's charged at the front end.
Yeah. I would just like to see the, the fee to be more in line of, with cities, uh, our size. You know, you got Edinburgh there at one seventy. Mission is two fifty. I don't know if that's a mistake. And over here, you have Mission at one seventy in the bottom, Harrington at two fifty. So for us to kinda go above that, to me, doesn't make any sense. So I would rather be consistent with cities our size.
Well, we, we probably need to look at when they adopted it. Um, because, uh, for example, when I did, uh, two years ago, I asked for a variance in Macala and at that time was two hundred dollars. Now looking at it, it's a hundred dollars more, two years later. So it's possible that they haven't updated, like, for example, Rio Grande doesn't have a variance fee or cost. So it's possible that it's been a while.
I believe the city of Roma is four hundred dollars.
Four hundred?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we definitely need to look at that. And maybe we need to look at the cost recovery process. How much time on average does it take you to look at a variance and the effort behind it?
There is no, uh, state mandate for ordinance, uh, for variance request. But, you know, this would recover some of the costs, meetings, you know, efforts, packages, you know, meals for the planning and zoning members, et cetera.
It does mention under section one, the second paragraph, that the fee will double if the, if it is tabled, if the variance is tabled, rescheduled. So if you have three hundred, then it'll be six hundred. So.
If the meeting is rescheduled?
If you present the variance, I guess if it's not fully documented and P and Z is not able to take action, so they table it, then it's got a double fee.
Cause they gotta revisit it.
Yes. At, at times before, we had to not only, uh, coordinate a meeting, but also hearing, which would, you know, entitle us to recover some of the costs. Actually, we do have, uh, right now in, under ordinance, we have stipulation to recover some of those costs already.
I, I think if, if fee is needed, but I do think it is steep, um, three hundred dollars. And I know you're trying to discourage.
Well, I, I agree with, uh, imposing a fee. I just don't, I'm, I'm not sure about the exact fee yet. And also to charge again if it's not, if it's tabled. To me, it's a little extreme. I would discourage from going and on that route.
So as far as the structure of it, I mean, obviously, we're all looking at this and agreeing on the fee, but it's how are we gonna structure it to meet the needs of our community as well and, and, uh, so as far as maybe not having to double it as one-time fee in a bit.
Right.
And, and this is, this is only if they need a variance, you know, should they not need a variance, then, you know.
Right.
The regular plan review, approval of permits and insurance.
And really, it's looking at all these permits and fees, uh, and variances. Um, so that, that way we can, again, going back to recuperate the cost for all this manpower and, and effort and so on. So at this point, what would be the, I mean, to go back and revisit the, the amount and, and so on? Uh, cause everybody's agreeing on, uh, that there's a fee, but not necessarily on the amount. How is it gonna be structured?
So we need to come up with the actual cost recovery and, and average. I mean, because we need to tie it to exactly, it's, it is costing us, but what does that look like? Is it maybe a hundred and fifty or two hundred? I don't know.
You said the city of, uh.
Roma. There, there is, like I said, there is, it, it varies in all the cities, all the municipalities.
Uh, Roma has zoning there and sometimes when they have to reclassify from a commercial, industrial or, uh, residential, it does take additional steps for the rezoning and, uh, of various. We don't have zoning at, right now, other than when it's designated at the plat, during the plat.
And not too long ago, we had a situation where we, they asked for a variance on a liquor license and we had to go through hearings. We met at least five times and, and like I said, it's costly. This is the constituents' money for.
Yeah. But there's gonna be a difference between commercial and residential. I mean, you can't charge a person three hundred dollars and then charge, uh, commercial property same amount. To me, it just doesn't make any sense. So I think it's gotta be a distinction between both.
Okay. So considering all these factors, we need to come back and come up with a structure of it and how, um, we can again, meet the needs of, uh, all these factors, take all these factors into consideration. So at this time, we.
Table.
Table.
We have a motion to table.
One second.
We have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carry. So again, for that note, just, uh, you can follow up on this, Mr. Milan, and see what the structure and taking all these factors that were mentioned here today, so we can certainly bring it back. Next, uh, business and orders, item, uh, four B, consider adoption of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash nine, repealing previously adopted ordinance number twenty seventeen dash two, regulating texting while driving.
Chief Castillo?
Yes, sir. Um, Mayor, Commissioner, we, uh, the, the new law that came in this year, um, uh, basically, uh, preempts any local ordinances or rules that, uh, have been in place regarding texting and driving. So, uh, in, uh, that order, we would wanna repeal the ordinance that we have now so we wouldn't, uh, make some and, you know, uh, have issues, uh, in the future with, uh, with the ordinance. So, you know, we're, we're still gonna have, uh, Texas law that, uh, you know, we followed. So if we get rid of the ordinance, it doesn't mean that it's, the, the law is not, uh, you know, we're still gonna be looking for texting and driving within the city as we are right now at this point. So, um, that in mind, you know, that's why I wanna, wanna remove the ordinance from the, from the city, uh, ordinance book.
Your recommendation is to.
My recommendation is, yes, yes, to, to repeal it.
Okay. Thank you for the discussion. All right. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Garza.
I'll say in the motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next is item five A, planning, discussion and possible action on variances. Request submitted by Alma Bassan for wine and beer retailers off-premise license for business located at five, fifty-one fifty-seven East Highway eighty-three, Star County, Texas.
Mayor Commissioners, this is, uh, what used to be the old Canales, uh, store number two across the church in La Fuerta. Area, uh, it's obviously across the street. Planning and zoning, uh, originally denied. The variance and they asked, uh, to resubmit or maybe consider consulting with the church, with the Catholic church across the street. We actually have a letter from the church, uh, that commenting that they don't have a, a problem with it, with existing, uh, liquor license. They wanna reopen the, uh, the, uh, the old Canales Brothers store number two. They wanna reopen the gas station. And again, the variances, because they're across the street, they're within a thousand feet of, of an existing religious organization. And the second time it went through planning and zoning, it was approved.
Based on the letter from the church?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How old was the letter?
I'm sorry?
This, okay, September twenty-sixth seventeen. So this is this year's letter, right?
They have, uh, coexisted in the past. Obviously, this is at least thirteen, fourteen years ago and they closed their doors. Uh, the latest businesses on occasion was the Johnny's Restaurant.
Okay. Have a motion.
I assume Mayor will approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next, uh, is item six, executive session, chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one, consultation with attorney and five five one dot zero seven four, personal matters and five five one dot zero eight seven, economic development matters. It is seven twelve P M. All right. We're back from executive session. It's eight fourteen P M. This is item seven, reconvene into regular session in consideration of action on matters discussed during executive session, including the following. There's no action on item seven A, no action on item seven B, no action on item seven C, no action on item seven D. And we have seven E, discussion and possible action regarding possible economic development agreement related to the Saint Ice Project under chapter three eighty. Yeah, three eighty in the Texas Local Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one and section five five one dot zero seven eight, Tax Government Code. Have a motion.
I make the motion to authorize the city attorney to review agreement as presented in executive session for execution on the next commissioners' meeting.
Okay. We have a motion.
I say the motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item seven F, and there was no action on item seven F. This time, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I assume.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor signify by saying aye. 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 Meeting adjourned. It is seven sixteen P M.
Go ahead, sir.